Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 12th. This morning, our invocation will be led by Pastor Larry Woodruff of Holy Light Church, and our president, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Council Protem Wardine Alexander. Please stand if you're willing and able.
Let us pray. God our Father, Jehovah Yahweh, Elohim, Allah, whatever we decide to call you, you're just God. We thank you now for this time together. We ask oh God that you will move in a mighty way. Send your anointing upon all who are present today. Thank you God for the privilege. We thank you for allowing us to come to share in this city council meeting. We pray God for each council member, their districts, all of the citizens of this great city. We pray God that you will bless us. Put your loving arms around us. Keep us in your care. God, and we ask you to fix whatever needs fixing. Bless us one by one and then collectively that we will all share in the building up of this city. We pray God for our mayor and all who are involved in leading in this city. Bless us and keep us in your care. Forgive our sins. Wash us thoroughly. Use us in your service, God. And for those who do not know you in the free pardoning of their sins, God, we ask you to touch their hearts, their minds, bring them in before it's too late. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Slap the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate.
Present.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Council Protem Alexander.
Present.
Council President Oakley.
Present. This morning, we have minutes from the July 4th, 11th, 18th, and 18th for 2023. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll consider a motion for approval of those minutes.
So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
That motion passes. The minutes are not ready for July 25th, 2023 through December 5th, 2023. Communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Your service, Mr. President, thank you. Good morning to you, good morning to your colleagues, to the entire council, as well as good morning to the public. That includes a sea of students from WJ Christian. It is good to see everybody this morning. A few notes, Mr. President and council. The menorah lighting is today. The community is invited to join the survival of Alabama and the city of Birmingham for menorah lighting. Take place at 4:00 PM today across from City Hall, and we hope our community members will join. Just a note, two days away, we're two days away from the strategic plan update. The community is invited to join us Thursday, December 14th at the Museum of Art at 5:30 PM as we will present a midterm report and some other strategic updates as we acknowledge some milestones for the last two years for a considerable amount of work ahead and look forward to having that discussion with the public. As stated last week, Birmingham Food Plus Cultural Festival was launched in October of this year to celebrate the city's culinary scene as in the running for to become the best new festival in USA today. Ten Best Readers' Choice Awards, and we're hoping that our community members help them in reaching that milestone. The public has until December 25th at 11:00 AM to vote for Birmingham, and you can vote daily, and the details to vote are at bhambuplus.com. Again, that's bhambuplus.com. One last note, Mr. President and council, now get out of your way. As you know, all single-family residents are now under the same car system. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts, as well as multifamily dwelling units of four or less, may apply for carts at a fee per cart. Any businesses needing more than two carts or any apartments, multifamily dwellings needing more than four carts will no longer be serviced by the city. And the Department of Public Works has been addressing issues on a case-by-case basis for residents on difficult terrain. If for any of our residents or small businesses need more information, please visit birminghamal.gov/pickup. Mr. President and council, that concludes the mayor's report. Short and sweet today, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. Next up, we have a few presentations this morning. First up, Council Woods will be presenting Banks Academy.
We wanted to bring down Banks Academy. We always celebrate anytime anybody brings some hardware into the district and so. Shout out Principal Tremble, Principal Tremble, Athletic Director Dwayne Coker, and Head Coach Jermaine Watson, but very proud of what these young men have accomplished, really have continued to build this program and made it to the state championship this year, and so very excited about some of the milestones they've hit. This is their first 10-win season in school history, first time winning the region in school history, first time winning a playoff game in school history, first time winning a semifinal game in school history, and first time playing in the state championship. And so, very proud, but want to invite Coach Watson up to say a few words, as well as Director Coker.
Great day, great day. Thank you guys for having us here. It's an honor, it's a privilege. Thank you so much for that. These guys here, knowing that somebody brought into what me and the staff was telling them, and it's a tribute of what hard work does here in the city of Birmingham, where you invest in your kids. And so, with my Executive Director Cass McWater, my Principal Dr. Tremble, and my AD Dwayne Coker, they believed in me and my staff and our vision, and so did these kids and their parents. And I tell people all the time, you don't have to go over the mouth, that's great parenting and investing the kids right here in the city of Birmingham as well, and I believe that this is proof right here with the work that our kids have put in. So thank you guys so much for having us here, and hope we'll be back down here soon.
My name is Cass McWater, Executive Director at Banks Academy. Mr. Coker, Athletic Director, is ill today, and so I will pinch hit briefly. We just want to thank you, thank the Birmingham community for all of their support, and we have partnered with Huffman Baptist Church. We are housed now in Huffman Baptist Church in the educational wing, and we just appreciate all the support that even as a private school that we get from the Birmingham community. And, you know, our job is to employ, employ, our job is to educate students to be great servants of God with great outlooks and great futures and great members of society. And that's just an example of these gentlemen right here. Hardworking, gonna be great members of the Birmingham community, so thank you.
All right, so thank y'all. We have a resolution for you, I'll give you as well, but do want to get a young man opportunity to just introduce yourself, so you'll say your name, grade, position. We're gonna try to get a little clearer. Watson, you must say it.
My name is Caleb Young. I'm in 10th grade and I play O-line.
My name is Kevon K. I'm in 1st grade.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play running back.
My name is Tatum Linder. I'm in 12th grade and I play quarterback.
My name is Willie Wallace. I'm a senior. I play quarterback, defense team.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior. I play offensive, defense, and offensive.
My name is James. I'm a senior. I play running back outside linebacker.
My name is Chaz Chalm. I'm a senior. I play D-line, linebacker.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play linebacker.
My name is Jared Perry. I'm a junior.
I play quarterback.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
I play quarterback.
My name is Javon Johnson.
I'm a senior.
I play running back outside linebacker.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior. I play D-line, linebacker.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play linebacker.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
I play quarterback.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play linebacker.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play quarterback.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabari Jackson. 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 I'm a senior.
My name is Jabari Jackson.
I'm in 2nd grade and I play quarterback.
My name is Tatum Linder. I'm in 12th grade and I play quarterback.
My name is Willie Wallace. I'm a senior. I play quarterback, defense team.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior. I play offensive, defense, and offensive.
My name is James. I'm a senior. I play running back outside linebacker.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior. I play D-line, linebacker.
My name is Jabari Jackson. I'm in 2nd grade and I play linebacker.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior.
My name is Javon Johnson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabar Jackson. 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 I'm a junior. And I'm a kid for Banks Academy.
My name is Caleb Young. I'm in 11th grade and I play O-line.
My name is Caleb Young. I'm a junior. And I'm a kid for Banks Academy.
My name is Caleb Young. I'm in 11th grade and I play quarterback.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior.
I'm a quarterback.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a quarterback.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a quarterback.
My name is Jabar Jackson. I'm a senior.
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 My name is Jabar Jackson.
I'm a senior.
Thank you, thank you. So very proud of that group there. I know there'll be more big things to come. This time, don't see Council Williams yet, but we'll go ahead and call up the WJ Christian Boys and Girls Newcomes Teams. Uh... I will skip it.
And I wanted to say something to the group, too. If you don't mind, Mr. President.
Councilmore?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say congratulations to you all again. I know I got a chance to meet the head coach and I'm good friends with Brother Cameron Davenport. We actually played football together over there at Monah High School, so I know you gentlemen have somebody that is going to really pour into you, and I just appreciate, you know, again, the hard work and service that you all put forth, but then, you know, I want them, I want the public to know that they've also, you know, been out in the community, serving in the community as well, so they're not just scholars, they're not just athletes, but they are servants to our city. We had a cleanup day where these gentlemen actually got a chance to come out and clean up in the Eastlake Park area, and so just want to say thank you again to the leadership that you all are showing in our community, and just continued success for you all.
So, do I understand we have a resolution that you would like to have considered? Have a motion?
Yep. Since I'm late and my name's on here, I'll make the motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Move the items.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
All right. Passes.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, we will invite up the WJ Christian Boys and Girls Newcomes Teams. Buying, they went undefeated this year, not a loss in the field. But, very proud of their continued success. I believe they were here a year or two ago bringing more hardware back into the district, and so I'm gonna invite Principal Lumsey up and just allow him to speak a little bit about the team and the program and just what he's been seeing this year. So, Principal Lumsey.
Morning. Morning. Thank you all for allowing us to be here this morning. We always like to celebrate success at WJ Christian. We pride ourselves on excellence inside and outside the classroom. Our Boys and Girls 6th Grade Newcomes Team, as Councilman Woods said, have gone undefeated this year, and the beauty of that, many of these kids, this is their first year at WJ Christian. They may have played Newcomes in the 5th grade, but this is their first year at WJ Christian, so we're very proud of them and their success. And again, the boys went undefeated as well as the girls, so this is a testament of a piece of excellence that we have here at WJ Christian. So I want to thank you all, and we have with us Coach Owens, who coached the Boys and Girls Team. Coach Owens.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to just thank y'all for having us here on behalf of WJ Christian and the 6th Grade Girls and Boys Newcomes Team. Thank y'all, and we hope to see y'all again next year.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and allow the student athletes to introduce themselves as well.
My name is JV and JV on Davis, I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Ronald O'Fane, I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Trader Craig, I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Peter Wally, I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Mariah Owens, I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Alia Brown, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Elijah Brown, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Alia Wood, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Taylor Holston, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Anaya Cleveland, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Anaya Horn, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Madara Thompson, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Caleb Lee, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Montello Smith, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Randy Prey, and I'm in the 6th grade.
My name is Coach Owens, and I'm the coach of the WJ Christian Newcomes Team.
All right, one more. Very proud of that group as well. They said it's not their first championship and won't be their last. Also, we're gonna bring up the WJ Christian volleyball team. Last but not least, they're coming in with a 22-0 record.
Wow.
We're gonna give Principal Lumsey, make sure we're not focusing too much on athletics. And so, this is a very special team. The Lady Chargers have been undefeated for the past three years. They've won the championship all three years. Under the leadership of Coach Deborah Story, they worked to develop a solid team of camaraderie, sisterhood to move forward the sport of volleyball. Each girl represents an element that develops and shapes the spirit of a winning team. They've worked hard to become leaders on and off the court, and so want to celebrate them as well, but invite Coach Story up to say a few words, as well as Principal Lumsey if he got some more words for volleyball.
Good morning. I'm Coach Deborah Story, head coach of volleyball team. As she said, this is our third year as being undefeated champs of Birmingham City Middle School Volleyball Team. These young ladies work very hard. They give 110% and so do their parents. We start out practicing in the summer and conditioning, so we are in the gym that first Monday after school close, and we do not stop. That's how we made this team and the past teams so successful, along with their parents, bringing them to practice. Sometimes on Saturday, we gonna find that time, and we thank Mr. Lumsey for everything that he does with supporting these young ladies. Without the community and parents and our school system, we would not be here today, and we thank you again.
I just want to say I'm very proud of these young ladies. Three years, three championships, three undefeated seasons, and this is not the same team as last year or the year before, so testament to Coach Story, as she said, our parents who take time out of their schedule to make sure these girls in the gym throughout the summer, and these girls who give up their summers to make sure that they are being prepared for the season, and that's what champions do, and so I'm very proud of them. Now, I will say this, we're here celebrating athletics this morning. We're here celebrating athletics this morning, but we're about academics as well. The school-state report card grades will come out on Thursday, and we anticipate, we anticipate good results academically for WJ Christian, so be on the lookout for those report card grades on Thursday. Thank you all for having us. Thank you, and we will be back. Thank you.
We'll let the student athletes just introduce themselves, so say your name, your grade, your name.
My name is Chloe Tipton, and I'm in 8th grade.
Hey. My name is Claire Fane, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Wendy Wallace, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Pacey Sager, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Kevin Bush, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Alexis Siltz, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Lacy Sisson, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Chris Nambak, I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Klemmer Pierce, and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Princess Lofton, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Madison Baby Papa, I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Cherry Titt, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Mariah Owens, I'm in 6th grade.
I'm Hannah Coastblair, coach of volleyball, Coach Story.
Congratulations, congratulations. Celebrate them as they leave, but very excited for them to join the eternity back in 1999. I put a trophy in the same trophy case. And then we can move to two WJ Christian resolutions.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Move the items.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
All right. And Councilmore, you?
Yes, I just, again, just wanted to say congratulations to all the young ladies. That is a very impressive record to have. Three years in a row, that's a big deal, you know. I'm pretty sure y'all strike a lot of fear in the hearts of people that come against you. But I also wanted to just say to Mr. Lumsey, you know, thank you for the work that you're doing in our community as well. I can remember when you were over at Arrington Middle School, as well as over at Engle Nook Middle School. Success is continuously following you, and, you know, just the work that you do with these young people, so I just want to say thank you to, to you for the service that you provide to our young people in this city. And again, like you all stated before, shout out to the parents that make this possible. One, one parent in particular I want to, you know, call out is Coach Keisha Cooper, who, yeah, that's your mom, I know, who I know for a fact is very involved and, you know, very, very supportive of the program, and so I just wanted to give her a shout out and just say thank you to Council Woods for this.
All right. Council Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just being an alum of WJ Christian, I'm so proud of both teams. I know middle school is really hard. That's probably the hardest part of life you'll ever experience because just the different things you're dealing with socially and academically, but Coach Story, and I'm sorry, I forgot the other coach, thank you for what you're doing, investing in the lives of our kids in middle school. This is a very pivotal time for kids. A lot of times, this can make or break somebody, so it's such a human story, taking care of these young women and just making sure that they instill what values and, and important principles that they take for the rest of their lives. And girls, I am so proud of you. You know, people may just say that it's just middle school volleyball, but that's really impressive. There are high school, college, even professional teams that can't make it undefeated, so I'm really proud of you, and Mr. Lumsey, thank you for all that you have done for WJ Christian. You know, you always wonder when somebody becomes the principal next for WJ Christian. I think, I don't know if Mr. Davis, if there's no principal in between y'all, but if they're gonna keep up the same standard and excellence of WJ Christian, I think you surpassed that, honestly. Knowing that these kids can do well academically and athletically is so impressive, so I'm proud of you guys. I hope you guys have a good Christmas, and thank you for coming, and Council Woods, thank you for always supporting WJ Christian. Thank you.
All right. Next, I'd like to invite CEO of the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, Charlotte Shaw. She has some announcements that she wanted to bring this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, President and the City Council. Mayor, it's always good to see you, Chief Sparks, Chief Mitchell. Thank you for this opportunity. Just a few announcements on my behalf, believe it or not, I didn't come asking for money. I just invited you to our State of Transit that's coming up in January. Wanted to personally come give you that invite. If you have not already received your invitation, which you should have, please let us know. We'd like to have you come. I need your support. This is the first State of Transit event ever held in the city of Birmingham. We're bridging the gap with our Transit Authority. We're bringing in the first autonomous vehicle for a demo at that event, and so we'd really like you to come. I also wanted to announce, I signed my new contract for three more years, so you stuck with me for another three years. And I just wanted to always come by. I feel like the city of Birmingham is my first love coming out of this administration. You can't tell me I'm not a part of this administration, and so we just wanted to come by just to let you all know about that State of Transit, very important to the city. We're gonna unveil our new services, our new micro-transit, our executive services, our new look and feel, and so hopefully, our plan is to continue our goal to make you very proud of this transit... I think, I don't know if Mr. Davis, if there's no principal in between y'all, but if they're gonna keep up the same standard and excellence of WJ Christian, I think you surpassed that honestly. Knowing that these kids can do well academically and athletically is so impressive. So I'm proud of you guys. I hope you guys have a good Christmas and thank you for coming. And Counsel Lewis, thank you for always supporting WJ Christian. Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to invite CEO of the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, Charlotte Shaw. She has some announcements that she wanted to bring this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, President and the City Council. Mayor, it's always good to see you. Chief Sparks, Chief Mitchell, thank you for this opportunity. Just a few announcements on my behalf. Believe it or not, I did come asking for money. Just invite you to our State of Transit that's coming up in January. Wanted to personally come give you that invite. If you have not already received your invitation, which you should have, please let us know. We'd like to have you come. I need your support. This is the first State of Transit event ever held in the city of Birmingham. We're bridging the gap with our Transit Authority. We're bringing in the first autonomous vehicle for a demo at that event. And so we'd really like you to come. I also wanted to announce, I signed my new contract for three more years, so you stuck with me for another three years. And I just wanted to always come by. I feel like the city of Birmingham is my first love coming out of this administration. You can't tell me I'm not a part of this administration. And so we just wanted to come by just to let you all know about that State of Transit, very important to the city. We're gonna unveil our new services, our new micro-transit, our executive services, our new look and feel. And so hopefully, our plan is to continue our goal to make you very proud of this transit system in Birmingham Jefferson County. And I appreciate your time this morning. But also, I think I need to mention, I am from the Leadership Birmingham class of 2024, just in line with the students.
Counsel Moore?
I was just gonna ask, what was that date again?
It's January 9th.
Okay.
And it's gonna be at the Museum of Art, Birmingham Museum of Art. And it's going to be, it's gonna start at 5:30. But we will probably have some reservations set up for the autonomous driverless vehicle. And so if you're interested in demoing that or being a rider, just let, I'll work with Counselor O'Quinn and we'll make sure that we get you reserved for that.
Yeah, so some of the folks who traveled to Atlanta a couple of weeks ago also did that demo with May Mobility. So it'll be the similar type of setup, I assume.
Yes, May Mobility.
Definitely encourage everyone to sign up for that when the reservation link comes out. Counsel Clark?
My questions were answered. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. January 9th, 5:30 PM at the Birmingham Museum of Art.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you so much.
And please let us know if there are individuals that you are trying to, you know, encourage to attend. If we can help in any regard with extending those invitations.
I could use your help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to the end of our presentations. At this time, we will have consideration of the consent agenda.
Your statement. Statement.
Oh, yeah, okay, so little change in the order of business. So first I'll read a statement. "All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business."
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items two and three. Page three, we have items four, five, six, and seven on consent. Page four, we have items eight, nine, and 10 on consent. Page five, we have items 11, 12, 13, and 14 on consent. Page six, we have items 15 and 17 on consent. Page seven, we have items 18, 19, and 20 on consent. Page eight, we have items 21, 22, 23, and 24 designated as consent items. Please note that items 22 and 23 are recommended by the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. Page nine, we have items 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29 on consent. Skip over to page 11, and we have item number 33 on consent. Page 24, we have item number 34 on consent. And on page 31, we have item, we'll conclude with item 35.
Okay, do any members of the council wish to add or remove items from the consent agenda? Counsel Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is working. Okay, on page six, item 17, I don't want to take it off consent, but we're talking about the Scott Ham site rather than Stockholm Sweden. So that's just, that just needs to be fixed as far as spelling is concerned. And then I wanted to remove item 18 on page seven from consent. And also, item 23 on page eight.
I'm sorry, I missed the last one. 23, thank you.
Okay, so we're removing item 7, I mean, item 18 on page seven and item 23 on page eight. Any others?
Yes, sir, and on page 10.
Okay.
Counsel Moore and I noticed that it says that the Community Development Committee has approved items 30, 31, and 32, but we have not even seen them yet. So we don't believe that we have approved them, but it says we did. Or recommended is what it says. Anyway, that's incorrect. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any others? Seeing no other additions or removals from the consent agenda, do we have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, consent agenda passes. First item, Mr. Clark?
Should be item one in ordinance submitted section 2, that's 5-384, 2-5-387, 2-5-388, the general code of the city of Birmingham to expand the boundaries of the City Center Business Improvement District to add real property, which is subject to special assessments within the City Center Business Improvement District, and to modify the criteria for exemption of real property within the City Center Business Improvement District for the special assessments and the hearing of all parties. And please note, this item is going to be the first reading of this item instead of the second reading. Need a motion on the item, please?
Look at the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so can we have the applicant come and talk?
Morning, counselors. My name is David Fleming. I live in the city of Birmingham and I'm also the president of REV Birmingham, which is a nonprofit organization that works on vibrancy for commercial districts in the city. And I'm here to ask your support for the passage of this ordinance that would expand the existing Business Improvement District in downtown to take in two additional expansion areas, namely the Switch and Five Points South. You have received information that we presented at your committee before and appreciate your consideration. So you have a fair amount of information and I will not repeat everything that we've talked about before. You also have received a copy of really what the legal description would be of the entire district if those two were added, and that has been delivered to you as well. But this comes as a result of a request to expand the current bid by the current Business Improvement District Board and a petition of property owners in those two districts that would seek to join the Business Improvement District meeting and in fact exceeding the required statutory agreement of property owners by a percentage of value of the districts. These are property owners who seek to empower themselves with the tool to help bring more vibrancy and investment to their districts. And as you know from previous presentations, the Business Improvement District is a geographical area, whether or not contiguous within a municipality designated as ordinance, by ordinance, in an area in which a special assessment may be levied on the owners of real property located within the geographical area of the district for the purposes of providing supplemental services within the district and promoting the economic and general welfare of the district. You can think of it like a homeowners association, but for commercial property owners, where everyone is assessed to provide supplemental services, not replacement services to public services, but services on top of, that help to enhance the common spaces. Because a Business Improvement District is driven and funded by and completely controlled by private property owners, it really is the most powerful tool that a diverse set of property owners within a commercial district can give themselves to help level a playing field with other areas, particularly areas where you might have single management from a property owner like a mall or a commercial office park. It's also designed to be the most sustainable solution, to provide a mechanism to address issues that everyone has in common. Because all the private for-profit property owners pay into it, it is, it is fair. There are not some paying and some not. It is also one of the most prolific tools in urban business districts across North America with over 1,000 Business Improvement Districts in existence. And, you know, many of us have traveled a lot, you've probably been in Business Improvement Districts and didn't know it. If you were in downtown Atlanta, you were in a bid. If you were in downtown Tulsa, you're in a bid. If you're in the loop, in Chicago, you're in a bid. If you're in downtown Chattanooga, you were in a bid. So I could go on 1,000 more times if I wanted to, but it is a very prolific and standard tool that's very well developed. The request to amend the Business Improvement District boundaries, again, comes as a request from the existing bid board of directors and those property owners. Everyone that has signed on sees the value of these expansions because of the way that the efficiencies are gained as opposed to being their own separate bids. The commonly managed bid will gain a lot of efficiencies and be able to share a lot of resources across those. Plus, they're so close to each other that it makes more sense and would be less confusing to the public. Bids are able to provide a variety of services that address a variety of things, including clean and safe perceptions of the district, as well as driving marketing, economic development, and other services, including parking systems if so desired. It really is a great tool for driving forward master plans that these districts have for their growth and development. It's also about establishing a public-private partnership. Again, this is not about replacing public services, but by hopefully establishing more of a public-private partnership in these places. We all know there are baseline services the city has to provide across its entire footprint, and it must provide those services equally to everyone. These supplemental services are able to be supported by business and property owners in addition to and not as a replacement of those baseline services. So this process is designed to seek such a commitment for public-private partnership, really, in addressing the unique needs of the business districts. As we explained before, REV Birmingham is not the Business Improvement District. The bid is made up of a board of private property owners who make the decisions on behalf of private property owners. They direct the staff or vendors to meet those priorities. REV is one of those organizations that works on behalf of the bid and engaged by the bid to manage it and run it. So just want to make sure everyone understood that relationship. So we have assisted in conducting the feasibility of this expansion, the business modeling and outreach work on behalf of district property owners seeking the bid services. Leadership has really been driven by private property owners, and you saw many of them at your committee meeting. Some of them are here again today in support. Some of them had conflicts today and couldn't be here, but they send their regards regardless. We have merely shown them what is possible. They've been the ones to sign up themselves and their neighbors and to set the priorities for the districts where they to be expanded. They are also only seen as one part of a larger strategy for a visualization of each of the districts set by the stakeholders. It is important, very important to say that a bid is not the single answer to everything. It's not the single answer to every challenge that a district faces, but it is one more tool of the toolbox. And there will be a lot of challenges ahead in this expansion, but if public and private and nonprofit sectors join hands together, we can meet those challenges. So the plans for these districts and strategies for the bid expansion have been shared publicly. You've seen them, and so I will begin to wrap up my remarks because we can make room for other public supporters or detractors to have their time. But I do want to say that we have gone above and beyond what the law requires in terms of notification and publication and having meetings and talking about this. And so we feel like we have tried to do everything very much in the public eye, and it has led us to this point today. In each of these instances, the priorities for these districts start with the clean and safe desires and the perception of safety. But again, the bid, the bids can do many things over time as they, as they grow. In both expansion districts, the proposed rate or assessment is three mils on property values, and those property values are determined by Jefferson County, not by the bid. Ultimately, the assessment rate is set by the property owners via the board, but the outreach and business modeling process found three mils to be an appropriate assessment that would provide enough of the resources for these districts. And just so people understand, a millage rate is based on property values, a very common way that a bid is often drawing its resources and a desire to be fair and equitable. A property's assessment is based on the property values, again, set by the county, third party. Once established by ordinance, the expansion district will be governed by a board of directors. And just to say a word about that board, it is a board that is representative of all of property owners. The law requires that at least a third of those property owners be small property owners or smaller properties as opposed to a lot of just concentrated large property owners. And the bylaws there allow, will allow for representation from these expansion districts onto the current board. So there will be a lot of representation from the expansion districts that will then set their own priorities and be able to direct those to the districts if they serve them. And just another word about accountability that is very important to the bid. The current bid annually releases an annual report to the public and to the stakeholders and to you. You receive that by law every year. But the law also requires two public meetings at the bid. So one is an annual meeting where the boards elect its officers and its board members. The second one in the year, later in the year, is when the board actually sets and considers its budget every year. So those are publicly advertised meetings, and that is, those are where those actions are taken. Finally, I want to commend many of the district leaders and supporters of this efforts. Some of these leaders, like I said, are here today and they are part of the team that recognizes how much value they will gain from pulling this, these resources together and partnering with the city on even more impact towards the vibrancy of their districts. If you adopt this and it is successfully established pending a 60-day period following your adoption for public comment or disapproval, then the work really begins. And I've stated before, a bid is not alone a single solution, but part of a very important toolbox that needs to be activated for your district. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for the background on that. I think before the public hearing happens that we need to have UC, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for UC.
We'll take the same motion we put forward. I just need to take a roll call vote for the UC vote. Counselor Abbott, this is for UC.
Aye.
Counselor Clark? Counselor Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Pro Tim Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, so now I need a motion on the item itself.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. Item is back before you.
All right, just seeing we have questions for Mr. Fleming. If not, this is a public hearing, so the public is welcome to come to the mic and make comments for or against. If you guys will just queue up and I believe we're ready to proceed, so go ahead.
Good morning.
Please, please tell us who you are.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Steve Alexander, property owner in Five Points South. Several commercial properties there, and I've met you before as the chairman of the Five Points Alliance, the community development organization in Five Points South that you know produces the St. Pass Parade every year. We're in charge of and manage the entertainment district that you granted to us several years ago in Five Points South. And we're proud to be in partnership with REV on the expansion of the bid into Five Points South. It's something we've worked on for years. There are, according to the Jefferson County Tax Assessor's Office, there are $558 million of value in real estate inside the bid boundary. Property owners of a majority of that value voted with us and have been included in the petition before you today that you expand the bid into our district so that we can address the issues that I hear about every day in Five Points South. But what we've lacked before is a funding model, and this model will give us that. I hope you'll consider this expansion closely and approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Lee Edwards, I own Edward Chevrolet. And I'm probably one of the larger landowners and the one that called the Switch. And I guess I was not included in that discussion of the Switch. And I guess I was not included in that discussion of the switch. Um, they have my information. Um, I was not invited to those meetings. I think I was invited to the, when it came up a while back, and, uh, because I was probably not in favor of it, I was not invited. So I'm very surprised that, that that discussion was had, and, um, and, uh, they have my information, and, and I was not, uh, I was not party to those discussions. So that was very disappointing to hear that, that a lot of meetings and I was not included. Um, and I would say I, I would be in favor in general of the concept, and I think it was, is something that we need. But I think the first things that need to happen before, um, before we, uh, continue is that there needs to be, um, some cleanup in the switch area. Um, there is a, there's a lot of criminal element that hangs out still there, and, uh, the city needs to help us improve that. There's a sense of homelessness that, that pervades the area still. Um, there is a, a problem, and it needs to be addressed. And, uh, you know, we have people walking the streets wearing no clothes on a regular basis. I've had installed ballistic, um, uh, uh, panels so that, uh, people can't shoot through our windows, um, because we've had gunfire and come into some of our buildings. It is, uh, there's a criminal element that hangs out there, um, is a problem. And, uh, I would, I think that needs to be addressed before I'd be in favor of spending more money, um, to help out with the, the crime. And, uh, I just, I would like that to be known. Um, I would like that to be addressed, and I think that if we could work on that, then I'd be in favor of, of spending more money to, to, um, address the bid, um, situation. So, um, I'd love to be included in the discussion. I would like to put off maybe doing the bid in the switch area maybe 60 to 90 days so that we have time to address some of the other issues first. Um, if you would, if you drive through and look at the encampment that's kind of hap- happening on the corner of, uh, 14th Street and Second Avenue, you might see where the issues are. Um, if you come and see the, the kind of, the, the trail of people that kind of go between the hotel, some of the homeless shelters, um, you'd see where the, where it's coming. People walking through the streets with no clothes, people defecating on the streets on a regular basis, you might, you might realize, um, there's something we need to address. And, um, it was cleaned up during the World Games for about 30 days. It moved on, but, uh, I'd love y'all's support to improve our whole quadrant over there. It could be great, it will be great if, if I have y'all's help, but the bid won't fix it. The bid, the bid will just cover it up, but it won't, they, they can't solve the problem just with the bid, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, counsel. Appreciate y'all having us here today. My name is Martin Evans. I'm a land use attorney here in Birmingham. My office is right across the park. Served on the Jefferson County Planning Commission for a decade. Uh, grew up here in Birmingham and, uh, work here in Birmingham, so I feel like I've got a good grasp on everything that's going on in the city. Um, I represent Opus Development LLC, and, um, they manage the Scholar Birmingham facility in Southside, which is a student housing facility located at 1001 20th Street North. And that building principally serves as a, uh, as residences for the UAB undergrad population. It's entirely residential. And our building is proposed to be brought into this new bid. And, um, also, you know, we're here today not only to talk about expansion of the bid, but most importantly for us, the definition of the exemptions that are being changed by this proposal. And so the effect, as we understand it, as this change in the exemption language, we no longer would be entitled to an exemption. And so under the existing ordinance, you have exemptions provided for certain residential structures and structures that are leased entirely, or structures that are, uh, primarily for residential leasing. But I understand now the change in the, uh, exemptions will be only to allow an exemption for detached, single-family residences. And so, uh, my clients here today, really, we're asking for three alternative things. One is to remove us from the bid entirely. Alternatively, we ask for you to exempt us from being assessed. We have one of the most valuable pieces of property in the bid, and I'll go on later, but we think that we'll be some of the, one of the least impacted, uh, facilities. But if we can't be removed and we can't be at least, uh, you know, entitled to some sort of an exception, we would ask that you postpone this meeting or, you know, this, your consideration of this ordinance and give us some more time to really understand, uh, the effect that will, that this will bring about on us. So I agree that bids can be beneficial. Like I said, I walk across the park, you know? I've seen caps, they, they have, they have helped. But there can also be pitfalls with, with bids. And, um, you know, our, we've got three primary concerns. Our first concern is really the, the procedures and the process of creating this bid. I understand that there is state legislation and the nation legislation sets out a process, and y'all have to follow that process. But you can also give us time to consider things more and really study up on this and put a pause in, uh, the process. And, and really, we need that because the first notice that we got, the official notice that we got of this, uh, was on the November, it was on November 28th, and it was for this meeting. And I understand that they may have gone above and beyond to provide notice, but even if you go above and beyond for all the people that have got to get notified, sometimes the notice isn't effective, and that's what happened in our case. We understood that there were some efforts to expand the location of the bid, and we talked early in the year, um, with Rev and had some discussions from, with them, but then everything died down and it seemed like everything was off the table until we all of a sudden get this notice, November 28th, that there's gonna be a hearing today. So we didn't get notice of the prior city council hearing, and so we're kind of beyond the, behind the eight ball trying to get caught up. And so now, you know, if this isn't tabled and we don't have some time to look into this, really all we're left with is utilizing the 60-day statutory objection period, which, I mean, if you stop and think about what kind of task that's gonna put us to, is, you know, Rev Birmingham's got years to plan for this, years, and then they drop this application to come before the city council, and then according to the statute, what we're left to do is go and scramble and round up signatures from a majority of the people in the district objecting to it. We've got the Christmas holidays coming up. You know, I mean, it's just, it's an arduous task to put us to, and it really just stacks the deck against us. And so we ask for y'all to build in some more time to allow us to further investigate the impacts that it'll have on our facility. Our biggest concern is the increase in cost. We estimate that this is gonna, the assessments per year will be approximately $150,000. And, you know, bear in mind that we're a residential, you know, residential use. We're not a commercial use, and I'm sure most of y'all are aware of this, that with commercial buildings, you've got pass-throughs, cam, you know, common area and maintenance obligations in a lease, that the landlord under that lease is already built in, able to pass that down through the tenants. We don't have that. We've got residential leases at fixed prices. We're gonna have to absorb that $150,000 cost. Meanwhile, you know, our, our tenants are part of a declining UAB, uh, undergraduate enrollment, uh, and our cost doesn't necess, isn't necessarily going to correlate or create any additional benefit for us. We already have our own security guard. We already have two police officers that live in-house with us and help protect the safety and provide a benefit to not only for us, but also to the surrounding residents. And so what you've got is, under the current scheme that's being proposed, our building will be one of the most assessed, even though we're not even a commercial use. And so, you know, if you stop and think about it, we've got a, a building with student housing that's being taxed more than a bar is, or, uh, a drugstore, or, you know, any kind of use like that. And so, um, our third concern relating to the exemption is, and I touched on this earlier, but the prior ordinance stated that all property held for lease or rental as a principal single-family or multifamily residence was exempt. And that's what we would, we would fall under it if we were under the existing bid and we weren't here to modify the terms. But, a- and obviously, that language is included in the original bid for a reason, right? I mean, the existing bid has that exemption for a reason, is to give relief for residential properties from this burden of this bid. And so obviously, it was there for a reason, it was thoughtfully put in there, and so I question why we're removing it now. You know, why are we changing the exemptions when we're just bringing in new area primarily? And so, you know, we've got, this process is governed by state law, and the state legislation or the enabling legislation, uh, requires that the districts and how they're assessed be fairly and equitably distributed, uh, to, or, or they need to fairly and equitably distribute the, the burden of financing from the bid. And so, you know, it's, it's easy to say, okay, this may be a good thing for the whole, you know, this may be a good thing for the city, but you've gotta go further and think about how is this gonna affect each individual, each individual class of property owners? The enabling legislation says that when you're setting rates, you shall utilize a class of property used for residential purposes. The only thing left in the ordinance that has been proposed is a, uh, an exemption for single-family detached. I think that is conflicting with the state legislation mandating that there be a classification for residential properties. So the city's proposal is more limiting to only provide an exemption for detached, single-family residents than the state enabling legislation itself is. And in essence, the proposed ordinance would treat us just like any other commercial property. And I've gotta say this from a, a land use lawyer perspective. I have worked on zoning ordinance for, zoning ordinance for county. I know how difficult it can be. It's easy to sit down and draft a provision and then think, okay, that sounds good, but you gotta go further and figure out what the impact's gonna be. I'm concerned about the revisions and stop and think about what we're doing. Only single-family detached now will have an exemption. If you own a townhouse, or if you're in a duplex next door, or an apartment complex, you're gonna be assessed, but the single-family detached owner's not. So the single-family detached owner who's affluent in the community, who has afforded to buy a detached, single-family house, they're not gonna be assessed, but the first-time homebuyer in a duplex or a townhouse is gonna be assessed. That's the language of the ordinance that's before you today. And so I know that, I know many of y'all are counsel, I know that there is no intention whatsoever to discriminate against income classes or discriminate against people within a certain income class, but what you've gotta do in these type of situations is, even if there's no intent to discriminate, which again, I respect everybody up here and know there's no intent, but you've gotta look further as to what the effect will be. And, and that is where the Fair Housing Act protects efforts where even if there's no intent to discriminate, if the effect of the ordinance will have a discriminatory effect on a protected class, minorities that mostly make up a lower-income class, then it could violate the Fair Housing Act. And so that's where I, as a land use lawyer, as, you know, being a, a, working in Birmingham, living in Dustavia, you know, growing up here, just wanna bring that to y'all's attention as well as on behalf of my client, that you, you're, it's, it's a, when you deal with land use and you deal with constitutional rights and property rights, and then you also deal with the police powers and zoning regulations, there's a very, very fine line that you can unintentionally cross. And if you look at the text of the ordinance and think about it, as single-family detached is exempt, but townhouses are not, that's suspect to me. And so, um, you know, again, if, if you could please, we would just ask for that my client be excluded from the business district or exempt from the business district, and if not, then we would ask for y'all to go ahead and table this request and put it over for a few months to allow us time to, uh, look further into this. And I've also got a copy of a letter that my office sent yesterday.
Yes, I believe we've, we've received it.
Okay. There's no need for me to put in the record then. Mr. President?
Uh, you can, um, share it with the clerk, um, but I, I know that we have received it. If member, if you have copies available for the council, um, you're welcome to distribute those as well.
If I could just get one copy of the clerk, that would suffice.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Counsel Clark.
Yes, I had a question for the gentleman who was speaking. Um, what is the, uh, street address of the property that you're concerned about? And, and specifically, how much time are you requesting that we consider delaying? That would, I just wanna be clear on what you're requesting.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Counsel Clark. Our street address is 1001 20th Street North in Five Points.
Okay.
And I believe if we could get 90 days, um, then I think we could get up to speed, meet with Rev Birmingham, really understand, um, this whole process better and, you know, be able to develop a better opinion on this. Because like I said, we, we're kind of scrambling to get together, uh, you know, a response to it, and so 90 days I think we'll be fine. Thank you.
Mayor Woodson.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Twice I've heard, uh, that, uh, sufficient notice wasn't given. Um, it would be great if the, um, previous presenter can come up and share with us or the public or the council, who actually has to deliberate and decide, um, probably a little more detail on, on notice, meetings, et cetera, process. Uh, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, I agree, um, and so you were following my same train of thought. If, uh, Mr. Fleming or Attorney Stanley just wanna review, um, everything that's transpired up to this point in terms of, uh, communicating with the property owners in the proposed expansion district.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, address that. I am pulling up, I didn't print it out, um, something that I'm happy to share with you. We, we actually have a, a two-page document that lists all of the outreach that was done for the switch and the, um, and the Five Points South expansion.
There you go.
Yeah, we have a two-page document that I can share with you that shows all of that, but it's, it goes back to, as far back as 2022, October of 2022, um, email and mailings to about public information sessions in the switch, uh, October 12th and 19th, public information sessions. Those sessions were recorded and posted online. Uh, we also in Five Points did mailings about public information sessions, uh, mailed this August. Five Points South materials also emailed to property owners August 21st and September 18th for two public information sessions, one held at Methodist Church and another held at Retail Specialist's Office. Um, and then of course, that was reported and posted, uh, as well. And then, um, the mailing, which is the, the only thing that required by law about the public hearing in South, and, uh, everything else prior to that was done. And then that includes lots of individual conversations, including with the previous speaker's client on numerous occasions, including last week. Um, and then, um, and I believe he's, he's left, and Mr. Edwards and I have had numerous conversations and, and specifically presented to him what this might mean to him. Um, you know, so I, I, I don't want there to be any sort of sense that we have not done enough to try to communicate. I mean, there are over 256 parcels, I think, of property in the Five Points bid. I don't know how many are in the others. We have, we have tried to do everything possible to make this a very public and accessible process and be available, uh, including conversations that we've probably been having every day with folks on it, but is that helpful?
Yes, um, could you also speak to, um, the 60-day objection period? You know, how, how does that work?
Correct, yeah, thank you. Um, the state enabling legislation requires that, um, the city council would be petitioned to, to create a bid if 50% or more property owners by value of the property. a bid if 50% or more property owners by value of the property, and that's the entire value of the district, all, all classes, all property types add up to that total value. And if, if over 50% of property owners by value are successful, then they can come to you. If you establish, if you vote in this ordinance, then there's a 60-day period where 50% or more property owners by number can get together and try to come forward and say, well, we actually have enough support to stop you. So that is how the state law is designed.
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Lee Johnson, lawyer for the District Management Corporation. So on the front end, when they come-
Can you pull the mic?
Is that better, counsel? Thank you. Lee Johnson, lawyer for the corporation. So on the front end, more than 50% of the owners by value have come to you requesting this. During the 60-day period thereafter, one-third of the number of properties within the resulting district can come to you for a recall. The, the state, that mirrors the state enabling legislation, and they designed it that way. And the council, when they adopted this ordinance in 94, mirrored that, and so we're abiding by that process.
Okay, all right. Counselor Clark?
To the points you just made, thank you, Mr. President. To the points you just made, if this were adopted, how will property owners be notified that they are now in the special taxing district? I mean, people who may not have come to some of the meetings in the past?
Well, our intent would be to then begin a setup process whereby everyone would be notified again that they are now part of the, sorry, I took long, part of the district. And then, as I mentioned, every year as part of the district, there will be regular communications that go to all property owners, and our team works very hard to make sure that we, we know how to get to everyone within the district. And so, that will come, not only, you know, we would be, starting in mid-year, the assessment always comes at the same time that people will receive their, you know, essentially property tax bills. So, we would probably communicate to folks about how this would work and say when the bill would be expected this year. So it'll be a lot of communication having to go, because we're having to do a lot of startup and helping them understand what's going on.
Yes, sir.
So, I know we've tried this in the past, and we've tried to sort of replicate the cap model in some of these other areas, like Five Points South specifically. And, you know, the, the current proposal has the common administration, so that, you know, all of these, this expanded districts or the expanded districts would be managed by the same core operating, or back office would be the, the existing cap. But, is it also, I mean, so that drives some of the efficiency, but is it also the newer, denser development in Five Points South that's making this something that's, I mean, how well would you fare without, you know, with the exclusion of some of the denser development that has happened more recently? Would it, would you still have the feasibility without, because I know in the past, there was not enough value generated by the development that was there to really cover the expenses. Could you talk some about the economic model and what, how some of the newer development may be contributing to the feasibility of this, and if it would work without it? I guess is what I want to kind of understand.
Feasibility is determined by a couple of things. One is you look at the property values, and you have to just determine what is the, the area where, where properties have the most in common. For example, you know, we, it has been raised, you know, that there are a number of, about the, you know, the single-family or condo issue, we're trying to make this a business improvement district, but a multifamily building is a business, that's a commercial property, and most of them are also mixed-use, and would have, you know, commercial, you know, businesses on the ground floor and residents upstairs. So, many of those denser properties are in the core of the district, and so that's what helps to make it more feasible, that properties have added up to a number where we think that the deployment of services could be sufficiently covered. And so, again, it is looking at what is the business district, what is the property value there, and what is the assessment value required to get there? And then the feasibility is, do people want it? And that's when we get to, to getting the petitions together. So, I would say those are the factors that go into feasibility. Does that help answer your question, counsel?
Somewhat, and then if the residential exemption did not change, how does that affect what you're proposing, I guess is the other-
It would not charge multifamily, is that what you're saying?
I don't, we're told that, we were said, it was said previously that we're amending the language to, to change the exclusion of residential to be more limited to single-family detached.
Counselor Clark?
Yes, Lee Johnson again. We are mirroring the state legis, or the state legislation. I believe it was unclear language from the beginning, and that's why the legislature changed it, because it said multifamily residence. It did not say multifamily residences, which would be a multifamily complex. And I think it's also noteworthy that the concern about duplexes not falling within a single-family exemption, there are no single-family or duplex properties within this area. And so, while that may be an academic concern, it is not an issue present before the council with this proposal.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mayor Woodfin.
Are there other, other multi-residency within this, in the south district?
The question is, are there other multifamily residential buildings within the Five Points South?
There are numerous multifamilies, and many of those have agreed and signed on in support.
Okay, thank you.
And in the downtown existing business improvement district, there are.
Right. All right. Counsel Williams?
I have a question for the administration, and that is, is this something that you guys recommend? I mean, overall, you guys, some concerns that you, that have been brought up today are kind of within y'all's wheelhouse. Is this something that you guys, as an administration, are recommending? And, and to cover the overall issues that a bid usually responds to?
Counsel Williams, that's a, oh, Mr. President, it's a Counsel Williams question. That's a great question, we, but it deserves an honest answer. This is driven by the actual business owners. We support what the majority of the business owners want. We didn't initiate this process, we didn't drive this process. I don't even think I've attended any meetings, but I will say this, I support the majority of our business owners who want it. I think it has many benefits. I'll start on the south side first. I think I've, I've known Counsel Valerie Abbott, if y'all didn't know this, I've known her for 20 years. I met her in 2003. And I know Crystal Smitherman, who represents a major portion of this district as well. I know the concerns they share with me via email, via texts, in person, in public meetings, et cetera, and I know they're passionate about having a higher presence that is, that needs a higher presence. I'm not, my, my train of thought, I'm losing it, but I'm bringing them up because some of the things I've shared with them is, what this allows is something that our basic services doesn't do, it's above the basic line. And I think that's needed, not just here, I think it's needed in other 20-plus business districts that exist across the city as well. One exists in our central business district. I think we've seen the positive results of that for the last few decades. And I think having two more of these type of districts work, and I think if you talk to the other small business owners and the other business districts across the, across the city, they would have a high interest in this as well. But like the same two districts here, they would drive the process. The administration would support the decision the majority of those small business owners want.
All right, and, and, thank you, Mayor. And then also to your comments about other business improvement districts, I know that Eastwood has been of conversation with, with Rev in the past, and I think that there would be a lot, you know, all bids don't have to look the same, caps doesn't have to look the same in all bids, but I think that there would be a huge, I know there's a huge need. I think that it would, it would be very beneficial to the long-term longevity of the businesses that are currently there, as well as from an economic development standpoint, trying to curb some of the issues that would draw in new businesses to that Eastwood. So, just publicly wanted to ask for both Rev and the administration's support on that Eastwood, because I think that Eastwood, from an economic development standpoint, is a little bit at a tipping point. We have a lot of good stuff going on, and we have some stuff retracting from that. And so I just wanted to put that plug in there, since you opened the door, Mayor Woodfin.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm going to keep an eye on Attorney Jim Stanley, but I want to try and, and provide sort of a layman summary of, of what's being done here this morning. But before I do that, we have one other speaker, so please tell us who you are and-
My name is James Berger, and I own the building at 1216 Third Avenue North. And I'm about two blocks or two streets down from Edward Chevrolet. I have a warehouse, it's a building warehouse that ha, that houses auto parts. It's always been problems in that neighborhood, it always has been. I was in that building for about 20 years and ran my business through that building. Office Furniture Mart and Burger Off Supplies, two of the largest companies in the state of Alabama, and what I sold. I elected to stay in the city of Birmingham rather than move my businesses outside the city of Birmingham, because I love the city of Birmingham. That's number one. Number two, I hope the mayor, whom I've never met, I hope he will support me, because I disagree as much as you would support those who agree. That would be fine with me. But this is what I've got to say about this situation. Mr. Edwards was perfect in what he said. That neighborhood has a firehouse where all the people eat and so forth that are vagrants in the street, and he's right about what's going on in the neighborhood. But I say this to you, I pay $10,000 a year in taxes, and I deserve that police, I deserve that protection. Also, I have to pay a renter's license of about $500 a year to rent that building. I deserve police protection in that area, even though I'm not there, even though they don't do any cash sales, there's not a restaurant inside that building. It is not, it is not a place where sales are made, it's just a warehouse, a standing warehouse. So all I needed was police protection. How come my $10,000 and the $500 that I spend not cover that? Not cover that? It should, and as far as the street and sanitation, which they show on this, how come my money won't clean up the area? How come? What if it was yours? What if you were in the same predicament I am? I just got this letter, this, this gentleman here was correct when he said he was late getting a letter, I didn't get a letter either. And that was your question. I didn't get this letter. I called him, and I talked to him, and when they told me what it was all about, I couldn't believe that I'm in a district where they want to charge me $3,000 more a year in assessment, when all I needed was police protection, which I feel like I'm already paying for, and street and sanitation, which I'm already paying for. That's $20,000, including my insurance. And I'm very serious about it, it really hurts to know that these gentlemen, and they, they have their right to speak their piece, have been working on this for over a year, and then I find out about it in time to show up for the meeting. But I did call and ask what it was all about, and that's what I got. And I, I'm not for this. I'm not for spending any more of my money. I feel like I've spent enough, and I hold and pray you feel the same way. But the man's right, I think at least 60 or 90 days, I don't know what it is, but please consider what I'm telling you today.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. All right, so, as I was saying, what's occurring here this morning is that the, the property owners, based on value, over 50% of those property owners based on value are petitioning the city to exten, expand the existing business improvement district. That would involve those property owners within those defined districts, which is part of the, what's before us today, is an ordinance, and amending the existing ordinance to add the properties as listed in the expansion areas. So, as Mr. Fleming explained, the, the majority based on property value are petitioning the Birmingham City Council to amend the existing ordinance to add those properties, and the districts would essentially function, as he explained, as a homeowners' association. So, what's before us today is, the council is, is authorizing the expansion, but we are otherwise not participants in this district. It would, the assessments would be done by the commission, then none of the, the funds collected would ever be seen by the city of Birmingham. There's a, essentially, a board of directors that would oversee the management of those funds, you know, and it's up to the property owners how those, those funds are utilized. So, just wanted to be clear about that. The other component that's before us today is an amendment of the baseline services agreement. So, essentially, what that does is also add these additional properties to that baseline services agreement, and the baseline services agreement says essentially that there is a basic level of services that the city provides to all communities throughout the city, and with this, the creation of this expanded district, those baseline services will not be diminished in any regard. So, just wanted to add that for the sake of clarity, because there's been a lot said this morning, and I want to make sure that everyone is, understands, you know, what we're doing. So, Counsel Woods, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought it was a committee public hearing, but I wanted to see if we can get a copy of the, I guess, the notice that was sent out to the, the business owners. And then also wanted to ask about, I think it kind of came up, I wanted to get some more clarity on the process of getting to the point of removing exemptions, kind of talk about that a little bit, as well as, I don't, you may or may not have run the numbers on this, but what the impact of that is to the bid as a whole.
So- So, Attorney Stanley? So while he's coming up, I, um, will make one comment about exempting properties. So, um, if you're familiar with the Downtown Business Improvement District, it really functions as a geography. So, um, if you're familiar with the CAP services, um, they function within a geography, and anyone who's located in the, in, within that geography is provided services. So, uh, exempting properties within a geography, from my perspective, would be problematic and essentially equivalent to, you know, spot zoning, um, because, um, it would be very difficult for CAP to maintain, you know, consistency across the board within the geography if, you know, parcels within that geography were exempted from, from the bid. So as it functions currently, you know, services are provided, uh, you know, maybe with the delineations being streets essentially. So, um, if you had, you know, a particular parcel within that geography that wasn't contributing to the services, they would still be benefiting from those services because, um, you know, the effect of, on the ground would be that, you know, CAPS is not going to ask you, okay, do you live, you know, in this property or are you dealing business at this property? And if so, I'm not going to, you know, help you unlock your car because you locked your keys in your car or, um, you know, I'm not gonna escort you to your vehicle because, you know, the property that you live in or are doing business in, um, hasn't, isn't part of the, the, the bid. So that's just my take on why it would be problematic, uh, to, you know, exempt particular parcels.
Is, is that how that works now?
Yes. So my experience has been that, you know, if you, um, are in the downtown area and you are requesting CAP services, so CAP is the, the service that's paid for by the existing Downtown Business Improvement District, um, they will ask you where you're, where you are. And if you aren't within the bid, they cannot provide services to you.
Well, I guess I mean more so in terms of, are they denying services to someone that's exempted? And so if you have residential...
So the existing bid is a contiguous geography. It's about 100 blocks in the downtown area, and all of the parcels, you know, it's largely based upon, the boundaries are based on streets. And so all of the parcels that are in those blocks that are included are part of the assessment. And so all of the services that are defined, you know, as dictated by the property owners, anyone who are, is in that geography requesting services are entitled to those services.
Okay. And so, because currently you have basically residential exempted, uh, as a whole. So I don't...
Single family.
Say again?
Single family.
No, no, I'm, I guess I'm speaking to present day before we amend anything. All residential?
Yeah. Attorney Stanley?
Yeah, I can address that. Uh, the current exemptions are for, uh, properties owned by nonprofit corporations, uh, single-family owner-occupied residential or property that's held exclusively for lease or rental as a principal single-family or multifamily residences. And that last exemption for the lease or rental properties is what is being asked to be deleted from the, from the ordinance. Just to put a little finer point on it, the state law actually gives the district manageable corporation, uh, sole discretion to make the, uh, the assessments and the classes and the exemptions. For whatever reason, back in 1995, when the ordinance was adopted, the exemptions were placed in the ordinance. Uh, and so we're, you know, we're respecting that, but the discretion lies with manageable corporation, and they made the request that we remove this particular exemption. Um, if I can go back to another point, I, I, I think in your package, you all have a copy of the notice that went out. It's a pro forma, there were two different ones. If you don't, we can certainly provide that to you, and I know you have a lot of documentation on this in your package, but, uh, we, we do have copies of the notices that were sent out to the, the pro forma notices that were sent out to the owners, and we can provide that if you don't.
Um, yeah, so I'm with, I think we're on the same page that, that we're in this amendment taking away, uh, one of the exemptions, but I guess my question was more so to that process of getting to that point and getting to that decision, as well as, um, what the impact of that is on the bid that's being proposed.
Yeah, and I, I think you've heard from representatives before, one of the property owners or two of the property owners who, you know, are indicating that, uh, in particular with Mr. Martin's client, what they believe the impact will be in removing the exemption.
I guess I mean on the bid, so let me zoom out a little bit. Um, I think this was committed a whole maybe. We were presented, you know, just the estimated budget would be revenue and expenditures would be, uh, for the bid. I guess my question is more so specifically, uh, how does, how does removing the exemption, either keeping the exemption or removing the exemption, what impact does that have on the, on the bottom line, basically?
I think Mr. Fleming may be in a better position to ask that because there are, as he mentioned, multiple properties in that. What their particular systems are, I, I don't have that information.
And then I think also like the quantity of properties that this would impact as well? And does, would this affect only this bid or would this also affect the existing bid?
Yeah, it will impact, uh, it, this would be in the ordinance, so really any bid would be affected by this, uh, the current, the expanded, and any future.
Did you have a...
Can you answer that question?
The question being, if I can restate it, make sure I understand it, is that the impact on the bid if multifamily was not included, is that, is that the question?
Uh, yeah, if you just replace bid and just put budget, I think it'll clear, clear it up everybody.
Um, the, the, the current bid is assessed and feasibility is based on the, including those mo- usually mixed-use properties. Most of those properties are mixed-use properties, and so yes, they are fully included in that, and that would impact the, significantly impact, I think, the, the budget, if that is your question.
You think it remains feasible without those?
Uh, we did not determine it would be feasible without them.
And then do you have any idea how many, um, I guess this is anybody that leases, anybody that leases anything that's not detached? I'm assuming you don't have a count of them.
If the question is the number of multifamily properties in the...
Right, so I guess the number of properties. So it's almost twofold. So one, you've got an existing bid, um, where CAP serves, the number of property owners that would be impacted, uh, by removing the exemption as it stands today. And then two, the number of property owners in the same category covered in exemption three that would be impacted in the proposed bid.
Um, you know, again, I'm, there are a number, at least a half a dozen, due, I'm looking at you, or in the Five Points District that are multifamily. Again, these are all people who are going to use the services. You know, I think we need to keep that in mind, but maybe we could speak more again.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again on that specific subject, Councilor. 35205 is the most densely populated zip code in Birmingham. Uh, over 20,000 people live within that four-square-mile, uh, area of surrounding the fountain in Five Points South, mostly because it is full of multifamily buildings. And they, they make up at least half of the properties. No, the, the bid would not work, the services would not be sufficient to, to do what we need to do in Five Points South. If multifamily businesses are excluded, as, as David Wright has said, these are commercial enterprises. Mr. Evans' clan has 520 beds in that building, 17-story building that they got special dispensation to have less than 100 parking spaces for, from this council. This bid will have an impact. He's, he said it would not have an impact on his building. It will have the greatest impact on his building, just as his tenants have the greatest impact on the neighborhood, good and bad. They, 520 people come out of that building every day and use the streets, and they may be student-age people. If they invited it all between, if they passed every bit of that $150,000 on to their tenants, it'd be $20 a month. And which parent or what, what student wouldn't give another $20 a month in their rent to have a clean and safe program with ambassadors in the district at the front door every time their child came and went out of that building? So, no, it wouldn't be feasible though, if it failed, if it failed.
Counselor? Counselor Woods, are you finished?
Uh, yeah, you can go ahead and jump over.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to ask about, um, you know, in, in the calculus, like the total value and then the, um, percentage of that owners making up over 50% of the value who are consenting to this, uh, how are tax-exempt properties figured in? Are they just totally, I know they could benefit from this, like if it's a church or, uh, an SRI or university property, you know, they could potentially benefit from it, but are they, if they're tax-exempt, are they left out of the val- out of the calculus, the calculations that, um, you're, that you're presenting?
Uh, and I want to make sure I'm speaking right with Jim and the other legal brains, but as I believe I alluded to before in my remarks, the state law requires that all property types and all values be included in the total value of the district. So if you're going to get to agreement, you have to consider all of the value, including those owned by tax-exempt properties in that.
So, so in the 54%, can they, can they be tax-exempt and also support the special taxing district?
They can, and some do, and, and...
But they don't pay taxes?
Well, they, they will not be assessed by the, the city ordinance, but almost all of those that have, I would dare say, I think, Steve, all of them have agreed to pay voluntarily, and some do.
Oh, so they will pay like a pilot or something?
They're, it's like essentially like a contract for services. There are some nonprofits in the downtown bid that do that now.
Okay.
Because they want to do their fair share, and because they know their people are using the services. Uh, but the state law, or actually the city law does not allow us to assess them, but they are required as a part of the total agreement going forward. But in no case in, in either the switch or the, uh, Five Points bid, none of those, uh, those don't add up to more than, than half of those in agreement, it's below that. So the majority of that majority are private property owners.
Okay, but the, but the public property owners who may be tax-exempt can or will be assessed a fee? Is that what you're saying, or no?
If it is a tax-exempt property, we cannot assess them, correct, Jim? Right, it's not assessable.
But they can vote to have, they could be considered in the 54% that's approving?
They have, that's the state law, is that they're, they're considered as part of that value.
Okay.
I don't see any additional questions. Ms. Clark, I think we are ready for a vote.
We have the UC, so just regular vote on this item. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, so that, no objections, that item passes. All right, so, uh, I've been informed that we need to reconsider the consent agenda to, um, withdraw item number 22, so, uh...
I move for reconsideration of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, um, so we need to remove, um, item 22 from the consent agenda, and we had already removed item 23, but we also, so need to withdraw both of them. Uh, they both need to be withdrawn, so we would approve the consent agenda absent those two items.
Uh, I move for approval of the consent agenda absent those two items.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, so ready for regular items? Back to the regular items. Next is 16.
Item 16.
Item 16 is on page six, an ordinance establishing a school zone for the Alabama Waldorf School and a reduced school zone speed limit of 35 miles per hour between the hours of 7:45 a.m. to 8:45 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. on days when school is in session on a portion of U.S. Highway 78 that is adjacent to and within 300 feet of the property boundary of Alabama Waldorf School. And this is an item of permanent operation, and I need UC to pass it today.
I'm on...
Move for UC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I apologize. Um, this is permanent operation. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
This is for UC. Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilpro team, Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, motion on the item.
Move the item?
Item is before you.
All right, do we have any questions, uh, about the item?
I was just trying to get clarity, is this something that was currently already in place and a change was being made, or?
Um, Chief Mitchell?
16.
I actually defer to you, sir.
Okay, so I, I can, I can give some background because, uh, Transportation and Infrastructure heard this yesterday. It was also brought before Budget and Finance. Um, so essentially, this is the first of, of much larger initiative, I guess it was in the last legislative session, that the state of Alabama, the legislature, uh, is now requiring municipalities to create school zones for all public and private schools within their jurisdictions. So, um, the department, the Birmingham Department of Transportation had previously been working with the Alabama Waldorf School, um, to address some high incidence of crashes that have occurred, uh, on Highway 78 in the Crestwood community, um, previously, and, um, so they are a bit ahead of, um, other school zones that will be created throughout the, the city. Um, I'm, I'm told that there are... I'm, I'm told that there are roughly, you know, about a hundred or more public and private schools throughout the city of Birmingham that will, you know, essentially get the same, same treatment. So this is part of this initiative. I could tell you, I had a specific question about thirty-five miles per hour. It's been my experience that, you know, school zones are typically twenty-five, however the, this is a state highway, so this one is a little different in that ALDOT is requiring us to have an ordinance establishing the school zone, and there are a few others that are also on state highways that will also require an ordinance to establish them. But, and this gets into a little bit of technicality, the MUTCD, the Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual that transportation engineers use, sort of specifies that, you know, you can't have the speed limit lower than ten miles an hour, lower than the, ten, ten miles an hour lower than the posted speed limit, which is forty-five miles per hour on Crestwood Boulevard at that location. So that's sort of dictates the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. And I'll say for this particular location, most of, or if not a hundred percent, the vast majority of the students are being picked up by parents in, in vehicles. There, there's no sidewalks at this location, so I dare say that there's not many students who are, you know, walking along the boulevard at this location. It may be an issue, you know, in other locations, but at this particular location, I think this works, and just to, you know, relay information from BDOT, they, they have engaged with the Alabama Waldorf School, and specifically, the school has requested these hours for the school zone, because I think they're a little different than what you might see for other schools. I cover it. Thank, thank you, Chief Mitchell.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes. Next item?
Should be eighteen on page seven. A resolution authorized the mayor to execute and deliver and approve Renew Birmingham in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to provide the following goods and services for the city. Renew Birmingham will connect and provide residents of the city with resources and programs related to housing, better education and workforce development, job opportunities and transportation, youth education services and community health and wellness regardless of their ability to pay through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four pursuant to sections eleven dash forty, dash one, eleven dash forty-seven, dash sixteen, and thirty-eight, dash two, dash nine, the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. Motion, please.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, questions? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to take this off consent, because I wanted to hear from the applicant or the person who's going to be doing, performing these services, how they're going to get community cohesion. How do you actually get the people into the neigh, well, people in the neighborhood to participate in the program? How do you bring them in?
Wanting counsel, thank you for this opportunity. Good question. Specifically, because we've shrunk in the service area, we don't say we're going to address the whole city of Birmingham, it's a hundred ninety-seven thousand people, nobody has the capacity to do that and actually move the needle. So we shrink the area, Enslie, Enslie Highlands, Waldorf and Tuxedo, which have historically been difficult parts of Birmingham, I happen to be from there, and because we shrink it, we know exactly where we need to go. So no, it's not sit a building and say, come to us. We, you'll be familiar with this concept, canvassing? We literally canvass the area, put people on the ground to knock on doors, not asking for votes, but giving them access. One of the reasons that we don't have access, or, or one of the issues with access is that people don't know how to get it, and in underserved communities, oftentimes people don't even have the energy to even look. So instead of saying, come to Jesus, we bring Jesus to the door, right? The other thing we do is incentivize people to throw yard parties. Yard parties are really, really good concept. We give them a hundred dollars to invite twenty-five of their resident, of their neighbors to their yard. We're going to bring the food, we're going to bring our case manager, we're going to bring some of our partners, right? So right there, you have access and an opportunity to get an assessment and see what it is that you need. The other things that we do are community dinners. I do dinner and a movie, we incentivize our volunteers, and so what it does is it creates cohesion by putting people into same spaces, working together. The three things that we do differently are really important. One is that shrinking of the service area. The second is the aggressive pursuit of clients, which allows us to recruit volunteers as well. But the third thing is the bartering. So we don't give services away because it creates dependency, and dependency is one of the things that continues to drive the decline in underserved communities. So what we do is we get the client, if they get a service from us, for every one hundred dollars that we spend on that service, they have to give five volunteer hours, which again, creates an opportunity for me to put those volunteer hours in the school, eliminating blight, doing yard parties, or canvassing. So the cohesion is produced organically through people working together as we deploy our strategies.
Well, that's, that sounds wonderful to me. I, I really, I love to hear what my colleagues are doing, because I might want to copy them. You know, and so when I read the documentation about your organization, I thought, well, I wonder how he's doing that, because, you know, cohesion is something most of our neighborhoods are missing, and, and I think that's the reason we have fewer people at neighborhood meetings and things, is because people don't even know who their neighbors are anymore. You know, they might wave at them, but they don't know who they are, and they don't talk to them. So I was just wondering how you were going to do it. So thank you. I'm sorry you had to sit through this big long meeting to answer my question.
I appreciate the opportunity to introduce someone who we haven't heard of it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Moore?
I just, I just wanted to ask, what's your name? Because I know you got up and you, you started sharing information. I don't know you.
Sorry about that, Counselor Moore. I'm Jerel Jones, Executive Director for Renew Birmingham, Enslie resident.
Okay, I think we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes. Next item?
Okay, we'll withdraw twenty-two and twenty-three. Next should be the item thirty on page ten. A resolution setting a public hearing January the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four to consider adoption of a resolution sentencing to the vacation of the following one hundred thousand six hundred and seventy square feet of the right of way that is located parallel to and between Fifteenth Avenue North and Seventeenth Avenue North, and perpendicular to in between Twenty-Second Street North and Twenty-Fifth Street North, fifteen sixty-four, Twenty-Fifth Street, on behalf of the Birmingham Jefferson Civic Center Authority owner, so that the owner can consolidate property, case number S U B two thousand and twenty-three dash sixty-five. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
That item passes.
Item thirty-one, a resolution setting a public hearing January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to consider the adoption of a resolution sentencing to the vacation of the following two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three square feet of the right of way that is located parallel to and between Tenth Avenue South and Tenth Court South, and perpendicular to in between Twenty-Third Street South and Twenty-Fourth Street South, twenty-nine, twenty-three, nineteen, Tenth Avenue South, on behalf of Winona Properties LLC owner, so that the owner can consolidate properties, case number twenty, two thousand and twenty-three dash eighty. Motion.
Move the aye.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
That item passes. Next item?
Item thirty-two, a resolution setting a public hearing January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to consider the adoption of a resolution sentencing to the vacation of the following three thousand nine hundred and fourteen square feet of the unopened right of way that is located parallel to and between Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South, and perpendicular to in between Forty-Fourth Street South and Forty-Seventh Street South, forty-four twenty-one Second Avenue and forty-four twenty-four Third Avenue South, on behalf of On the Trail LLC owner, so that the owner can consolidate property, case number two thousand and twenty-three dash eight. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, that item passes. Are there any additional items?
At least the items on the agenda.
Counselor Abbott, did you have a question?
Yeah, I didn't have any questions. I wanted to say that I misspoke earlier, and the items that have not been to the Community Development Committee are items two through fourteen, not the ones I mentioned.
Okay, I got you. All right, noted. All right, at this time, we will have announcements from counselors. Counselor Clark, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. Well, there are no neighborhood meetings in District Eight this week. Things seem to be slowing down a bit for the Christmas, Christmas season or holiday season, but it wasn't slow last night at the Enslie Highlands Grown Folks Christmas Party. That was pretty fun. Also enjoyed being with, out, out at Neighborhood Association Holiday Parties this past weekend. Bush Hills had, Bush Hills Connections, which is a nonprofit associated with the Neighborhood Association, had their Holiday Gala at Birmingham Southern. It was a very elegant affair with lots of neighbors and community partners. And then Rising West Princeton had their Christmas party in their newly renovated and refreshed community center, and it was really great to be there with them. But I think the one that was, the most interesting was Fairview Neighborhood, who has been meeting via conference call since COVID, and they had an in-person party, and they got to see each other for the first time. So it was pretty interesting to watch people get acquainted with each other's faces after having only heard voices and names for a few years, so that was really cool. I want to just also note that Miles College has an event coming up, and it is called the Miles College Community Give Back. That's going to happen on December fifteenth and sixteenth in the gymnasium on campus, and if you'd like information, because it doesn't have the time, but if you'd like to give, get some information on the Miles College Community Give Back, you can contact, you can dial, I don't know why I can't see all this, you can dial two oh five nine two nine one five zero two, or email studentlife@miles.edu. That's for the Miles College Community Give Back, December fifteenth and sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the college gymnasium. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
All right, Counselor Moore?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. There's a lot of Christmas events going on, or that took place this past weekend, so I wanted to give a shout out to Brumley Heights for having their food truck event in their neighborhood. It was a wonderful opportunity to connect with different residents and get some good food, and I wanted to also give a shout out to Kilo Springs as well, who had their event this past weekend also, and just say thank you for, for everything that they're doing in the community. Let me see, we had, I also had an opportunity to attend NARAB's event this weekend. I, along with, you know, Mayor Woodfin, and as well as Director Megavenable Thomas, and Director Caroline Douglas, were all awarded with the Black Summit Champion, Black Housing Summit Champions Award, and so want to say thank you to them for that recognition during that night. Tonight, we have the Birmingham Public Library that will be hosting a Family Fun Night. They will have treats, crafts, and an opportunity for pictures with Santa at the Central Branch location. This event starts at five thirty. I'll also have an opportunity to do some Christmas reading there as well, so excited about that. Also wanted to just make an announcement that I will be speaking at the Woodline Theater tonight to the Alabama Clinical Schools Group. They will be hosting foster parents as well as the foster children there, just to have a wonderful Christmas night celebration. For those of you who don't know, our, our city, our state, is definitely in need of more foster parents to take on that, you know, monumental task, and that rewarding task of, you know, helping and, you know, nurturing our young people who need it most. And so if you are interested, please reach out to them, because they would love to have you join their, their team. Let me see, we don't have any Neighborhood Association meetings that are taking place in Kilo Springs. Northeast Lake will meet at six PM at the Southern Museum of Flight tonight, and Penfield Park will meet at the Brownsville Heights Community Center tonight at six PM as well. The next Community Development Committee will take place on December twentieth at two PM in Conference Room D and E, and if you would like to be a part of that committee meeting, please submit your, make your submissions to terry.chapman@birminghamal.gov. Those are all the announcements that I have, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, everything's canceled. The next Planning and Zoning Committee that was scheduled for Wednesday, December thirteenth at three thirty, is canceled, and we will meet at our next regular date. The Neighborhood Association meetings for tonight, East Avondale and Highland Park, have been canceled, and they will both meet on their regular dates in the new year. And I want to encourage people to call three one one or download the My Behem three one one app that I love so much. And also, for residents of District Three, please continue to visit our website, behemdistrictthree.com for announcements and information that, you know, there isn't really time to go through right now, and you can read it at your leisure. And that's all for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The South Tissusville Neighborhood will have their Holiday Social today at five at Oak Street Health, that's at six three three Tuscaloosa Avenue. The Arlington and Western Neighborhood will have their Holiday Social today at six PM at the West End Library. We will be having a Holiday Social really at Tissusville Library, located at two Sixth Avenue Southwest, and that will be from two to four PM. We'll have free dinner as it lasts, and we'll have Ramsey High School choir singing as well. The next Budget and Finance meeting will be next year. It will actually be Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at three thirty PM. Submissions are due Wednesday, January third, by noon. The Crescent Center Cultural, Crescent Cultural Center, as was stated last week, will have a free women's self-defense class on Saturday from one to three, and also the Man Up Project Leadership Team will host a Building Skills, Building Future Born to Lead Mentoring Session from ten to one on the same day. They'll be teaching young men goal-setting, handmen skills, carpentry, electrical plumbing skills session. Actually, I think my nephew is going, so it's going to be very interesting. So, and also, the District Six Office would like to send our condolences to Mr. John Harris on the loss of his longtime partner, Ms. Geraldine. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Counselor Woods? Counselor Tate?
Counselor Woods, they got an announcement. Thank you, Mr. President. All District Nine Association meetings are canceled for the month of December, and will resume back in January during their normal meeting schedule. Hooper City will be hosting their annual Christmas Gala on Thursday, December the fourteenth at two thirty, I mean, at six o'clock, Hooper City Rick Center. Want to shout out to the P I O team for coming out this weekend to the Six Pratt Neighborhood Christmas Fest, and thank all of those that participate, Mr. Richard Hare. Christmas Festival and thank all of those, uh, that participate, uh, Mr. Richard Harris, Ms. Arlene Johnson, Ellen Spencer, Ms. Cora Williams, and all of those people, Mr. Alonso Darrell, all those individuals. So they had a nice time out there and thank, um, Sheriff Pat Wafer stopping by and V ninety-four nine Lady Ruth and all those good people that were there hosting. Uh, we are having a public safety meeting today at one in Conference Room D and E, but the next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, January the ninth. Submit agenda items by Wednesday, January third, no later than twelve noon to patristotcolis@birmingham.gov and gregory.stanley@birmingham.gov. And happy holidays. And also, Mr. President, I think I may have sent you guys some information on yesterday. If I did, please forgive me, but the Salvation Army will be starting their, their CDL class up in January, also a Lash Tech class as well. So if I did provide you that information, I will send it over, uh, to you guys. And look at the council PIO, I think they may have posted it on the Birmingham City Council's web, um, page, Facebook page, so you can see that information there as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pro Tem Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I have announcements for District Two on behalf of Counselor Williams. The next regular scheduled Economic Development and Tourism Meeting is scheduled for December nineteenth. If you have any submissions, please email them to india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by twelve noon on tomorrow, December thirteenth. These are announcements for District Seven. We have several bulk trash and brush pickups scheduled this week for District Seven. Today, they're picking up in Germania Park North. The pickup for Thursday is for the Riley Neighborhood, and Friday, they'll be picking up in Green Acres. And as well as on Monday, the pickup will be in Goldwire, Tarpley City, Industrial Center and Garden Highlands. So please make note of these pickups in your various neighborhoods. Uh, we're very excited, we had a very good weekend, this weekend, spreading joy within District Seven. Uh, first, we started with Southwest Birmingham Alliance. They had the Southwest Holiday Festival. I was very excited to partner with a lot of other community members to bring some joy to those residents. We had a very nice, we went around two streets and we had a very nice, um, parade, and so I'm always excited about that. We had our grand marshals, uh, from WVTM thirteen, and we also had our Birmingham Police Chief Scott Thurman, and we were just very excited to have all the participants in the parade. I did not get to blow my flute with the Winona High School Band. For some reason, I think the band director, Mr. Moore, thought I hadn't practiced enough and I wasn't ready. But, uh, I was very excited to join the, um, band members. We actually had three bands, uh, as part of our parade. Winona High School, Green Acres Middle and Jones Valley Middle. So it was just very exciting to have all of our residents out. Then we went over to, um, support the Men of Powderly. Believe this was their eighth annual, uh, event where they give out bikes and coats and other nice goodies, and so I was very excited to partner with them to bring that love and joy over to the Powderly neighborhood. So I'm very grateful to the Men of Powderly for the support they give to District Seven. So just excited for these holiday events and, um, thank you for those announcements.
All right. For District Five, uh, the Transportation Committee, the next Transportation Committee, uh, would have normally been scheduled, uh, during the week of Christmas, so obviously that is canceled. So that puts the next Transportation Committee that will be held in two thousand twenty-four on Monday, January eighth at two PM. Um, and we will be, I think, back in council chambers for that meeting, so, uh, kudos for, for, for that. Also, keep in mind that the, the Transportation Committee is now the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. Therefore, um, we're, that committee's now handling, uh, the utilities also. So for anyone who is interested in applying for the, uh, vacant Birmingham Waterworks Board position, um, please send your letter of interest and resume, uh, to Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov by Friday, January twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The City of Birmingham will have their annual menorah lighting, uh, today, four PM in front of, uh, City Hall in Lynn Park. The Fourth Avenue Business District will be having their fourth annual, their inaugural Fourth Avenue Forward Holiday Market, um, taking place on Saturday, December sixteenth from noon until five PM in the Fourth Avenue Business District. For more information, please visit urbanimpactbirmingham.org. Um, and just wanna remind folks that both the Alabama Theater and Sidewalk Film Cinema are showing holiday movie series currently. Um, you can check out their respective, um, websites. Actually, Alabama Theater does their ticketing through Ticketmaster, um, and Sidewalk, uh, has their ticketing at sidewalkfest.com. Um, but if you've never participated in the holiday movie series at the Alabama, it's actually a lot of fun, a lot of people attend, um, there are sing-alongs and such, so, um, it's, it's a pretty rowdy crowd there, so definitely recommend it.
Do they play the organ?
I don't know, um, for the holiday movies, maybe not. Um, but anyway, still a lot of fun. Uh, again, um, we're hopeful that we'll be back in council chambers, um, for our twenty-first meeting of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I think that's January second. Pro Tem Alexander and I were able to do a walkthrough yesterday, um, and, you know, I think most of our concerns concerning lighting, audio and, um, other equipment, you know, that equipment is in place. The PIO team will be doing training on that system, uh, next week, um, but fingers crossed we'll be back in there in two thousand twenty-four. Please be advised, though, that there will be some additional work that will still need to be done, be done after we've moved over in there, um, you know, some of the minor details. But, you know, the important thing is that we'll be back in our regular home, uh, in two thousand twenty-four, so, um, stay tuned for that. And I just wanted to remind you, um, that, uh, City Clerk Lee Frazier needs to hear from you regarding your availability for a council meeting the week of Christmas. If y'all wanna meet, um, more power to you. If not, you need to let, uh, Mr. Frazier know if you're gonna be available or not that week, so, um, please send that to him, uh, that correspondence to him as soon as possible. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me make this announcement. Commissioner Shiva Tyson presents a Christmas giveaway, bring a bag and shop, household season of beauty, clothes and more items, vaied at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fountain Heights Rick Center is where this will be held, and that's address eleven oh one fifteenth Avenue North, and that's on tomorrow, no, I'm sorry, December the fourteenth at ten AM until it's all gone. So if you have questions, you can contact, um, two oh five three two five five zero seven four. Looks like her partners are parked in Rick and the North Side Community.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clark, uh, will now have our request from the public.
Evelyn Boykins?
Good morning, Ms. Boykins. Please, uh, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning to each of you. I'm Mrs. ZD Boykin. My address is twenty seventeen Weatherly Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one seven. I thank you for this opportunity to present my concern this morning. My concern is a grave concern, and I would appreciate it if each of you would look in your own hearts and in what you're doing, what you have been voted to do. And I think it's, well, I hope it's not too late to correct my injustice, but I hope that each of you will take it upon yourselves to see that what I'm asking does not happen or happen to another citizen. Sometimes, we've, we've, we've had several killings, deaths, what have you, and some of this has been given because concerns and small things, we would call small, as in relationship to a death, harassment is, a small thing considered to a person being killed or threatened their life. So I'm asking you to, as I speak, to kinda hear what I'm saying. If you see something, say something. I'm saying something. I've been saying something for a long time, all to no avail. Regarding one person, let me tell you a little bit about me. I am the first female president of my neighborhood, a neighborhood called Broomit Heights. I'm not the president now, but I am still the first. It's been some time. I'm the, I'm a, a retiree of AT&T. I'm the first retiree of the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. I built three houses in my neighborhood, and I don't run for anything and from anything and anybody. I try and encourage everything and everybody that's right, that ask me to assist them. I encourage some folk that don't even ask me because I see potential in them. I don't run for anything now because I think if you think you're so good and you have done things, step back and encourage younger people to come up, and that's what I do right I've not finished any, I don't have a college degree, but I've got some college credits. Hers in college thought another me to ask me to assist them on their citizen advisory board, of which I hold in high esteem. That was good for me. It encouraged me. I've been a member of my church for seventy years. I joined when I was ten years old in my community. I'm a member or former member of the, of the Southern Christian Leadership Board. I've walked over the Edmund Pettus Bridge more than once, more than twice. I was there when Clinton was there, got a chance to shake his hand and talk with him.
Ms. Boykin?
I'm asking.
Ms. Boykin, I wanna, um, pause you for a second, so you, we've, you, we allow-
I understand you, speak a little louder, boy.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we allow public speakers three minutes. I'm gonna give you some-
And I passed my three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, so I'm gonna give you some additional time. Uh, we'll give you some additional time, but please, um, you know, wrap up your comments, tell us why you're here this morning.
I'm here because my neighbor takes it upon himself, even though he is on bond, to walk into my yard when he gets ready, rock my house, threaten to kill me more than once, and he didn't tell anybody to tell me, he told me himself, and he has told me himself. This is not just now starting. This man was born there, and he has, since he's been an adult, he's moved away, but he's moved back in the house with his mom. We were, we were, uh, this has come to court, and I'm here for another thing. For whomever is in charge of the attorneys here for the City of Birmingham, they're getting a paycheck. I presented all of my evidence. I think a five-year-old child could have presented my evidence and this man been found guilty, but my evidence was not presented. When I- Show him the evidence, show him the evidence. Be quiet, Ms. Boykin. Every accusation, allegation didn't have to be addressed. I got you now, I got you. This man got, was on, what do you call it, on, on a bond, when, when they let you out of the jailhouse, and you promised not to come near the person, not to come on the person's property, not to do this, not to do that. This man signed the bond saying he wouldn't bother me anymore. He did. He even got on the witness stand and did, and admitted. Well, they said, well, why did you come on my property? Well, I came on there because of a rock I threw up against a house. I had to have that tow, I wrapped that paper, and I had to, so he came up there, he got his paper, and, and, and the judge didn't stop it right there because that bond that he had signed, that should have pulled up. I would have stopped it right then, and I'm not the judge, and that would have been corrected. Then they said, well, you came on there twice, why did you come in there a second? Well, it was two numbers on there I needed, but I didn't get but one, so, well, why did you come on there a second time? You already had the, the rock and the paper. Well, when I got it the first time, I threw it over there again.
Okay, Ms. Boykin, um, so you're discussing a item of, that's been apparently litigated. Attorney King, do you wanna give us some context?
I want to sit the whomever's in charge here to meet with me today as soon as possible. I've already met with someone that said they, they can't get a transcript until January.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Boykin, thank you. Attorney King?
So Ms. Boykins, I have met and my team has met with Ms. Boykins, and so we are working through this. There's a pending matter, so I just ask that the council not discuss this because it's pending litigation.
Say that again.
This is a pending matter. There's a new case in municipal court, in the Court of Appeals that is pending, so-
I'm speaking of a one that has already been, where he has already-
Ms. Boykin?
Down and got, and a warrant, a warrant from out of Rex.
Ms. Ms. Boykin, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. So Attorney King has advised us not to discuss this matter because there's a pending litigation. Next speaker, please.
Michael Gunn.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, Michael Gunn, not Elizabeth Bevel?
Thank you, just wanna remind you to, when you come to the mic, please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Elizabeth Bevel, and I live at eight twenty-four, eighty-sixth Street South. And before you start the call, let me pass these papers to you all. I'm here to request some no parking signs. I requested them in the past, and the parking signs were placed across the street at, uh, seven twenty-one, eighty-sixth Street South. That's the Banks Park. It is, uh, vacant, but that lot, um, my neighbor's next door at eight twenty, uh, they have a lot of gang activity, drug activities and all kind of activities going on across that lot, in their driveway and in their house. Well, my, my problem is that they'll park, and I have pictures that are attached to those, so we might wanna share the pictures with one another so you can see what I'm talking about. Um, they've had all, they have all kind of events, they park ten to twenty cars on their lot, and all the cars, uh, car doors slamming, opening, loudings, everyone who pulls up has a, a rap going on in his lounge, and it's disturbing, quite enjoyable in our homes. I'm asking that we get those parking signs, no parking signs placed back over there because they, they helped. There was no noise, nothing when those signs were there. Well, the police said that they could, uh, police that property and they would not, um, need those no parking signs there because they get police, they can't police that. No one can be there twenty-four seven, but with those no parking signs placed over there, there was no noise. And if there was some, we could call the police and they can do something about it. Well, when we call the police now, they can't do anything. You know, they're gonna tell me, um, Ms. Bevel, we can't do anything, and I understand that they can't. It's legal to park over there, and that property belongs to the city. And, uh, you see all the pictures, if you can share those pictures, if you wanna know, there are a lot of pictures I have of those people on their property. It's a nuisance. And that, that house next door, they, I think it's a rental property, it has been raided. I don't know if they didn't find what they were looking for, but it's, it's, it's a nuisance also. And that's eight twenty, eighty-sixth Street South, right next door to me.
Okay.
You see the pictures that I, that you have? There was one, there were two of them that have a no parking sign, when you see that no parking sign that was taken down, um, that's attached to the back there. I mean, it worked long, it worked weird. And if you- And if you can't put the no parking signs, they'll put some type of planters or something there to, as a deterrent to keep them from parking across the street.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next speaker?
Paul Godby.
Good morning, Paul Godby. I'm at 821 23rd Street South, and I'm the president of Southside Neighborhood Association. My concern is about the so-called right-sized parking ordinance that's coming up. There's still a lot of questions that has to go on about this, and if it's left up to developers to decide what parking they want, I'd say it's already been an immense failure. The principal example is the Ascend Scholar Building on 20th Street that the attorney talked about earlier. They have, I think he said 500 beds, but only 100 secured parking. Well, these people then park on the street, they clog up the regular crosswalks right here, and the cars on the 10th Avenue and Magnolia and everything are subject to break-ins quite a bit. The tower on Kent also has minimum parking, about 70 spaces for over 200 tenants, and a leasing agent said, "Well, they can park on the street too." Well, all this causes immense problems for the business people in Five Point South. There has been businesses to leave Five Point South to go to a place that had more parking. So, I would say that really having the requirements on residential is very important. To emphasize this, not every city is on this agenda. City of Tokyo here is, if you need a car, want to register a car, you first have to find a parking space for it. So, and I can share this with the council later. I'm also disturbed by the tone of some of the people in the Planning Committee there when they say things like, "Well, these people don't need parking." That's marginalizing the people. The low-income people, they don't have cars, they don't need parking. Well, this is a big problem. Like I said, it marginalizes these people, and by building housing that doesn't have parking, you're kind of creating an economic apartheid. Because now, if that person may choose not to have a car, that doesn't mean the next person that rents that space doesn't want to have a car. They may need a car, but there's no space for it. So, I think this entire thing needs to be reexamined and rethought there. I understand that Committee of the Whole is going to speak about it next week, if it's not before Christmas.
We do have a regular scheduled, the Committee of the Whole meeting scheduled for December 19. We're still working with the administration to develop the agenda, but that is potentially one of the items that we will have on Committee of the Whole agenda.
Well, I would say that parking for any resident house, new construction, or anything like that, they need to go ahead and allocate space for a car because most people will have cars, and you can't force them to give it up to live downtown.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our requests from the public. Any last minute? Counselor Moore?
Oh, I was just going, well, you got to do the-
In Counselor Williams' absence, I think the honors are yours.
Listen, I moved for adjournment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you to Cedric Pinker, Jason Hick-